Go on please, Brian. We asked the question, did you finally have, sitting there, United States Church, Cape Girardeau, come forward and find Pastor? And as they've come forward, they asked for them to be in a home in silence as we pray for the victims, their families, all the public safety, being valued, and their families. And the families of the tragedy in North Spence yesterday.
Thank you. Perhaps it's appropriate you just take a moment and think about all the things that attack could not do, and that is to destroy the human spirit that was shown in all those care, the care given by the concert goers who became first responders on the spot and took care of folks they had never met in their lives and risked their lives for that. So we give thanks for the spirit of God working in their lives and in others as well. Let us pray. God of all consolation, we cry for peace this night, and there is none in our hearts. We cry against the flagrant waste of life, promises that will not be kept, friendships lost, the love of family left ungratified. Open our eyes, God, to see your presence, that we might understand that death is always counter to your word. Show us streams that rush with living water, your mindful watch in every struggle against death. Give us grace to know your gift of Jesus, our compassion through death's night, and our guide to new day's glory. Fill us with your Spirit's breath of life and lift us to you in our need, that we may know your sorrow in this as deep as our own and hear your word of hope. And it is in that hope that we call ourselves together tonight to do a part of the work to which you have given us. We ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
I want to lead this to the prayer of the United States of America, and to the republic which expands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call to order this session of the Cape Girardeau City Council. This is our October 2nd, 2017 meeting. Thank you all for being a part. Roll call, please.
Danny Ester.
Here.
Bob Boggs.
Here.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Victor Gunn is absent.
Shelley Moore.
Here.
Harry Redeker.
Here.
Joseph Zero.
Here.
Okay, motion to adopt agenda, please. It's a move by Guard.
I'll second that.
And second by Ester. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The first presentation on the agenda tonight, the acknowledgement of our rescue team deployed to Hurricane Harvey in Texas, will be delayed until the next meeting through unforeseen circumstances, but we will get them here. Marla and Parker and whoever is presenting, this is the annual report for Old Town Cape Plus, right?
Plus.
Plus.
That's right.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Marla Mills. I'm the executive director of Old Town Cape, and I have with me Parker Butler, who's the resource development director for Old Town Cape, and then some of our board members. Danny, yeah, you can pass that out. Chris Hudson, Dr. Stephen Hoffman, and they're passing out some swag. You have the report, you have the report in front of you. And then let Parker tell you about a project that we're very excited about, that we want you and the whole city to both be informed about and to support. So first of all, I just want to say thank you to the council and on behalf of the staff and the board of directors for the support that the city gives our organization. We feel that, as you can tell by the report, that the work that we do supports the goals and objectives of the city, and I've tried to, we've tried to show that in the report that we've given back to you, how we do that and in what areas. We do have some statistics that I'm pretty proud of, and this, these, this information is the last fiscal year for the city, so from July of seven, or sixteen, July of sixteen through June of this year. So 24 net new businesses opened in downtown, and 59 net new jobs into the downtown with over, over 2,000 volunteer hours over that year, and kind of a staggering number, eight million, over $8 million, $8,355,174 in private investment, and $3,533,735 in public improvements into the district. And we know that those numbers are actually particularly on the private side, underreported. We track what we can, but there's a lot, we, our district covers 131 blocks, and so there's a lot that, that is invested in the district that we're not aware of. And the same with new jobs, when the, when jobs, excuse me, when employment has increased in an existing business, we don't capture that a lot. We also have a great social media reach. The Facebook has a weekly average of over 703,000. That's organic, not paid reach, so that doesn't include the paid, and it does not include our reach with our riverfront market. And then our email that we send weekly is a, that 20,305 represents just a quarter, one quarter average. So we're excited about our new website that we launched. It, it is branding and really promotes downtown as a destination, so if you haven't seen it, please go to downtowncapedirado.com. It is, it houses the Old Town Cape page as well, but it is all about downtown and promoting downtown. And then this year, we were involved in at least 70, what'd I say, 73 events in, in one way, shape, either hosting them or involved in them directly. So that's a lot, and, and again, we think that we leverage a lot to the, to the city through the work that we do. We helped with the Main Street project, we helped manage the, work with the businesses, help support those through that project department and the consultants as well, and we had a block party when that was over to celebrate it. So I'm just highlighting a few things. We, we have worked with the development services, the downtown, downtown development team has helped support and facilitate the development of the new strategic, downtown strategic plan, which you will be seeing shortly. We are a resource for the businesses and new business coming to downtown, as well as events, activities, that sort of thing, and we think that's an important role that we play. We're also the liaison to the city for the special business district, the downtown Cape Girardeau Community Improvement District, and, there's one more, I've lost it. Through the CID, we help facilitate their services, which includes beautification, new, there's going to be a lot of new Christmas decorations this year. We're in beauty, but also litter pickup, maintenance, that sort of thing in the downtown, and then the pedestrian police patrols, which have had a great response and have been very effective in, in the downtown area. We also have worked with developers and development assisting on projects with the city, as well as privately with developers, specifically the Esquire and Broadway Theaters. We're working with consultants to help with a feasibility study to see if that project under a certain structure could move forward. Some of the, our events that we directly host, we're kind of really proud of the market this year. It's grown a lot, brings a lot of people downtown, specifically the, kind of the younger generation, the, with the families and, and the group that we're looking for, the, and under, that sounds very specific, and it is, but that's kind of who we're trying to, to really encourage downtown, to come downtown. And then, in addition to that, we, let's see if I've missed anything, we're also the liaison to the city for a lot of city processes and committees, anything that's specific that comes up for, really with any of the departments in the downtown, we, we are kind of the contact for that. And so that's kind of a highlight. I will, I'm going to turn it over to Parker Butler and let him explain a project that we're involved in, that we're real excited about, and that we will be glad to answer any questions on.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us in here tonight. As Marla said, we're very excited about this. It's an opportunity unlike anything that we've been presented with. To kind of get started, you've heard us talk a little bit about partners and preservation, and you may be asking, well, what is that? It's a privately funded grant program for the National Trust for Historic Preservation and American Express, that they've devised to engage the public in historic preservation. This year, the theme was Main Street districts, and that is why we were invited to participate. Only 25 communities in America were chosen, and we were among communities such as Washington, DC, Los Angeles, and Seattle, Washington. You know, it's, it's an honor for us to, to be considered, to have a Main Street district that is on par with those places, and out of those top 25, only the top 10 communities are going to receive funding, which is up to $150,000. And we've been asked, how did we decide on the project that we've gone with, which is our very own Ivor Square here in downtown Cape Girardeau? About the time that the council was deciding to rename that park behind Common Pleas Courthouse as Ivor Square, we were looking for a project proposal. It also worked out perfectly that Ivor Square really fit the qualifications for the project that was looking for. The two qualifications for that is that it had to be a property that was historic, which worked out perfectly. The Common Pleas Courthouse and Ivor Square are on the National Register of Historic Places, and it had to be an area of public significance, which obviously being a park attached to a courthouse in our town, it was very much a public significance, given all of the history that is a part of the property. It really lined up perfectly for us to consider approaching this project and to apply for the funding opportunity. Our plan, if we do receive our full funding of up to $150,000, is to highlight the history of the property. James Ivors and his family are an incredible part of Cape Girardeau history, and we want to tell the story properly by displaying some signage that tells his story and, you know, why Common Pleas Courthouse is an important part of Cape Girardeau. In addition to that, we would like to make some aesthetic improvements as well, put on a roof to the gazebo, give the fountain some maintenance that it much needs, and enhance the landscaping, make it feel more like a park, make it feel like a place that families want to go on picnics, that people want to have weddings at, and make it a place that people travel to. You know, it's, it's a place that deserves that, and we feel that if we get this funding, we can make it into that. The big question is, what's the catch? This all sounds awesome. Well, the catch is that we've got to get into that top 10 out of those 25 communities. So we're calling on everyone in Cape Girardeau, every citizen, to go to voteyourmainstreet.org. That is voteyourmainstreet.org. If you take away one thing from this, please make it that. And there, you can cast up to five votes per day for Cape Girardeau, for every email address that you have, you can cast five votes. It's very easy. You get onto the website, you put in your email address, it'll take you to the map, you click on Cape Girardeau, you select your five votes, it'll give you a screen to do that, you close out of that screen, and then you click submit. It'll take you 30 seconds of your day, and we're asking that you go and do that. It's an opportunity to get, to get money for our community that simply isn't going to be coming in otherwise. So the campaign goes from this previous Monday, September 25th, all the way through October 31st, and we're asking everybody, spread the word as much as you can, and get all your friends, family, and constituents out there to vote. Does anyone have any questions about anything?
I did that last week, and I, it was easy, and I voted.
Awesome.
But then the weekend came, and I didn't vote on Saturday and Sunday. So it's more than one vote, you can vote every day.
Absolutely. The weekend, we dipped down to ninth, and we came back to seventh today as the work week started again. So we've been in the top 10 through the entire campaign, and we hope to keep that strong and drive all the way through.
Okay.
Parker?
Yes.
What are we doing to get the word out to the community to encourage everybody in town to vote?
So we've been, to get them to vote five times.
Or email.
We've been heavily pressing, using Facebook advertising. There, there's a feature where you can pay to boost that advertisement. I wish we had our marketing director here, so I could give you specifics, but we've been getting thousands of impressions every day on people in Cape Girardeau and the surrounding area, to really get that into there. Another big thing that we're doing, I almost forgot, so they brought it back up to me. We'll be glad to have you there. Jerry Ford and his Dixieland Dan will be there, playing from six to seven. We're also going to be going over some more of the specifics of the project. We've got some artist's renderings of what exactly we think this is going to look like once we're done, according to our vision for the property, as well as some other fun and refreshments provided.
Yeah, and that's, as soon as I did it, I did it, but to go back and think every day to do it, and, and you're going to have to do that, to, and the other, the other thing, Danny, is, is more people, more people to, to react to it.
Absolutely.
But it's an honorable project, and we might as well, we got the opportunity, we might as well win, and it's, it comes down to, you know, there's not a 20, 50-page grant application to put in, you just got to vote, right? It's just the vote.
We did the application already.
Yeah, yeah, so you just, so you just.
There wasn't.
Well, yeah, but I mean, people don't have to worry about that. All they got to do is vote, and the deciding factor is going to be on the votes.
Absolutely. We're up against some gigantic community, think that we have the spirit here in Cape Girardeau to beat Los Angeles, to beat Seattle, and take home $150,000.
Now, is there, rise, there's.
10.
10.
10 of the 25.
10 of the 25, so we don't have to be first.
We're just going to be in the top 10.
Just as much as the first.
You can get on the website, and list it by votes, and it shows you where you stand, so.
Yeah, we've, we've been checking that pretty religiously over the past week, so.
So council, how many have voted so far?
I just did.
Okay.
I forgot about it, because I saw Marla tonight, so I.
Well, we, and we gave, we gave each of you some collateral material. We have extra material if you want to distribute it. We also gave you a button you can wear every day through the end of October to, to really promote the project. We have t-shirts, we have ambassadors that are spreading the word to answer your, to answer you, Danny, a little more fully, but we have the buttons and, and some of the collateral material, so if you'd like more of that, we have lots more for you as well.
So if I have four email addresses, which I do, I could vote 20 times.
That's right.
Yes. I have three, I've been using all five votes on every email every day, so.
Okay, good. Ivor Square still doesn't resonate with a lot of people, and, and very recently, council, we passed the naming of Ivor Square for the grounds that, at Common Pleas, and I might just go through, you know, Stephen Hoffman's sitting back there, he was a great part of that, and the Historic Preservation Committee brought that to us, and it, and it's in honor of James and Harriet Ivors. Ivors was a, he was a slave here in Cape Girardeau. I should probably have Stephen tell this story, but, okay, yeah, come on up, come on up and tell it. We need to get that word out, what Ivor Square represents.
Sure, and again, you were, you were doing great. James Ivors was enslaved here in Cape Girardeau, lived and worked downtown, and was married. On the first day that African-Americans could enlist in the Union Army, he enlisted at the courthouse here in Cape Girardeau, and he went off to serve the, the Union forces. He died during his service. His widow, Harriet, was able to obtain a pension, which was not an easy thing to do. Slaves were not allowed to be married, per se, but, but of course, they married anyway, and, and so she was able to, you know, provide evidence of that and had community support, and it was a struggle, but she prevailed in, in getting her pension. She used her money to buy a house here at Cape Girardeau and raised her family, and, and so we really felt like it was a tribute to the spirit of freedom and success and the contribution that African-Americans have made to making Cape Girardeau the, the great city that it is. And this is a great opportunity to, to, as Parker said, to, to tell that story and to get some signage and to make it, make it clear, kind of, just, just who we are made out of and have been historically.
We're so rich in history, and rich in Civil War history, and this, and lots of twists about Civil War history, and this is just another way to portray and recognize an individual that, that served and came out of slavery and served the Union, Union. So we were honored to do that, and, and more and more people will recognize that as we move forward. Ivor Square will mean more in the, in the months and years ahead, so thank you.
Thank you.
Vote early, vote often. This is one time you can.
That's right.
Okay? Vote early and vote often.
That's right.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about that or the report?
One on mine, and you know what mine's going to be, don't you? The, the promotion by merchants of the trolley, how's that going?
I think it's going well. I think I actually did not get numbers, I can get numbers on the ridership.
We got, we got the second month, and it was up considerably.
Yeah, I think it's increasing steadily.
We'll have it again the 13th of October.
Okay. I, I think it's increasing steadily, and, you know, the business owners really like having that opportunity to, anything that can make it easier to get around in the downtown area. I think, you know, I think there's opportunities to tweak it, to make it work even better, but as, as we see what the ridership is, we'll.
Yeah, and I, and I haven't talked to you about this, but I, I don't think we need to wait to tweak it, as we know with some tweaking that needs to happen, I think we can do that as we go.
Sure.
This is all a learning experience.
Sure.
And, and we need to make it go.
Sure.
Because it's all about getting citizens and visitors downtown, into the downtown area comfortably, and, and having them have a good experience within downtown.
Exactly.
Still excited about it and want to stay focused on, on growing that, that venue.
Sure.
Okay?
That sounds great.
Other questions?
How do, how do people that aren't familiar with Cape Girardeau know about the trolley, besides seeing it pass by?
It has been, and this is truly a partnership, kind of, it, it's not owned by any one, one group or organization, it's, it was kind of a effort on behalf of the city, mayor's idea, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Isle is involved, we're involved, so the Visit Cape promotes it as, as a way to get around downtown. We promote it as a way, you know, in, in any opportunity that we have as a way to, to move around from, and particularly when there's parking concerns, you know, like this past weekend when it was very busy, to promote that there's opportunities to park in different areas of the downtown and get around.
That you're promoting, and if it is promoting, I'm asking how, how are you promoting?
A lot of social media, a lot.
What if somebody like drives downtown? You know, it seemed to me like there was a lack of signage, like if I was, if I was visiting from Perryville, for example, I would already know how to get to the river. I'm not going to get on Facebook to figure out Cape Girardeau has a trolley, right? So are we doing enough so that people who are coming here know that there's a stop at Fountain Street Broadway and at Discovery Playhouse on Middel and?
And that may be one of the tweaks that the mayor's talking about, that we kind of started it, and, and we need to probably regroup and look at, is there a way to better promote it once we're down there? We can make it part of, probably at some point, the kiosks that are down there, maybe signage at the stops to, to show people where, you know, where, where they go. The kiosk might be the best place to put it.
Do you see anything on the website either, Old Town? Parker, is that on, is that on there?
The trolley?
Yeah. Because I don't want to get, I don't want the project to get next, because the ridership compares for.
Right.
People just didn't tell us about it.
And it's going to take time, and Mogulucky reminded me when they started up with the, with the routes, that it, it took at least two years to get people familiar with it at all.
Right.
So it is, it is going to be a, a growing thing, but the more we can do, the faster, the better off, the better off we are.
We may have to look at the, the, the website. We just launched that just a few weeks ago, so that may be something we, we don't have on there yet.
Have you used any buttons or t-shirts or anything yet?
We have not done, we've talked about doing that with, with some of the downtown business owners.
With merchants and clerks and waiters and.
I like the idea of buttons.
If they'll do, and then people that are there say, well, what is that?
Yeah.
Ask me about, ask me about the trolley, kind of thing, you know?
Yeah, I like the idea of buttons, because then they can.
Yeah.
Wear it every day.
Yeah. And it's not conformed to their dress codes and everything.
Right. Any other questions?
I just want to say I love the banners.
Oh, thank you, thank you. That was a CID project, and Russ Media designed those.
They're not, I know they're not all up yet.
No, they're not. They, they will be.
The ones that are up are very colorful, and they're, they identify the streets, and I think they're a good addition.
Well, thank you, there, that's, that's what we were going for, so. Any other questions?
There must have been 10,000 people there to see what you were planning.
There's still, that, Saturday was, well, both days were very busy, but Saturday between that and the conservation, and then Parents Weekend, it was just.
I think it was kind of planned, that that weekend happened, the weekend before she comes to get her Old Town Cape report, you know, I think it was kind of coincided.
It's my, it's my master plan, you know?
Marla, thank you for being here.
All right.
Parker, thanks for all you do, and the board, we appreciate all the work. We're seeing rewards, and it's gratifying. Thank you for being here. Communications, I'll continue to expand on last weekend. Downtown was probably maxed out, though, with about how many that we could handle, with the ships that have created a, a real, a lot of interest with not only schoolchildren, but adults. Parents Weekend, last weekend for Southeast, brought in a considerable number of people. Of course, the boat was in the Conservation Center and, and the Flea Market on Sunday, and it was, it was just an outstanding weekend downtown. Also, we'll want to lift up our public meetings for PRS that are coming up. That will be voted on in April of 18, and we're at the point now, we're looking for public input. Council will be there, staff will be there, and we're anxious for our citizenry to come and, and visit with us and share their thoughts and ideas. The dates are the 10th of October, six to seven, at the 4H Building in Arena Park, the 12th of Thursday, the 12th of October, six to seven, also at Shawnee, and on the 18th of October, the next week, at six to seven, also at Osage, so. Opportunities, if you can't make one, ask citizens to, to come to those. So opportunities, if you can't make one, ask citizens to come to those meetings. Also, reminded that petitions are now available for the coming election next year, for Ward 1, 2, 6, and Mayor. To City Hall, at the Clerk's Office, they are available. Let's see. Other, council. Any communications?
I added a citizen to the roll since last meeting.
Congratulations. We're always looking for a population explosion. We're up one. Okay. Very good.
I'd like to say something about the communication conversation.
Sure, go ahead.
That is going on night of the week, starting at 6:30. And the conversation is about racism and getting to know the, you know, the different cultures. So I'm inviting everybody to come. And it's been good. It was packed. No rooms, no to sit, all against the wall. And it's targeting mostly Caucasians, so that they can get an understanding of what racism is, what I say that is teaching us all, okay? And it's sponsored by Pastor Renita Green, St. James AME Church on North Street. So you're welcome. They have eight more sessions to go. It was 12, now they have eight.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Okay. Any staff?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to staff. I have three public hearings tonight. Counsel, number one, a public hearing is a public hearing to consider a request to zon property at 1237 North Water Street from R2, single-family urban residential, to M1, light manufacturing industrial. This public hearing is open for anyone to appear before the council. Public hearing open. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And counsel, let's move to item number 17, Bill number 17-153, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of property located at 1237 North Water Street in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from R2 to M1. First read. So moved by Fox.
Second.
And seconded by Guard. Any discussion?
Mary, I think this has the potential to add a great asset to Red Star, and I'd like to thank staff for working with the person who's interested.
Okay, thank you. I totally agree. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Number two, a public hearing to consider a request to rezone property on Cardrona Drive from R2, single-family urban residential, to R1, single-family suburban residential. Public hearing is open. Anyone to appear before the council. Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. We'll go to item number 18, Bill number 17-154, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of property located on Cardrona Drive in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from R2 to R1. First reading. Moved by Guard, seconded by Fox. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. And our third public hearing is a public hearing to consider a request to rezone property at 921 Independence from C1, general commercial, to C2, highway commercial. Need a motion? Just get a motion.
Subway.
So moved by Guard. And seconded by Zero. Okay. This one has had been through planning and zoning. There are some issues with the C2 zoning as it relates to spot zoning. And we have staff that has come with a recommendation. And as we visited at our study session, I'd like our deputy city manager, Molly Hood, to relate staff's opinion of this issue.
Thank you, Mayor. This application for rezoning was originally to go from C1 to M1, as it was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, based on some opposition from the neighborhood and the fact that there's not much M1 zoning in the area. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to not approve the M1 zoning, but rather to accommodate the applicant's request and find some common ground, decided to recommend C2, which is a highway commercial zoning district for this property. However, staff is not supportive of that zoning district. There's no other C2 zoning in the vicinity. The closest C2 on Independence would be down at Carruthers. Staff thinks a better solution to allow auto sales at this location would be to allow auto sales as a special use permit in the C1 district. Therefore, maintaining the C1 zoning and consistent with the neighborhood, but also allowing the applicant an avenue to do what he wants to do on the property, which is auto sales. In the interest of working with the applicant, though, we would like to find a way to issue a temporary business license to get him started with his operation while we get through that process.
Because it'll take a little time to get that...
It'll take a little time, correct.
Okay. Okay. So, counsel, any further discussion on this? This would be supporting staff in turning down this public hearing. So...
I don't think... I think you skipped the public hearing.
I didn't read the... Did I not read the...
I think you need to go have to conduct the public hearing and see if anyone's present, and then we can go to the ordinance.
Technically, Mr. Mayor, you do need to open the public hearing for...
I didn't open the public hearing on this one. That's what I didn't do. The public hearing is open for anyone to... Yes!
How y'all doing? My name's Johnny Gaines. I live Scott City.
Okay.
And I bought this lot in 2007. And it was a car lot when I bought it. And in 2007, economy got kind of rough, so I went out of business. And I was gonna... I had it rented. And I never was aware that they changed the zone on it. I mean, I brought Mr. Redliff with me. He was there for 30-something years.
38 years.
38 years. And I bought it from him. You know, I got a mortgage on the place, and there's nothing I can do with it. I mean, I got a list of stuff I can do. I can, you know, you can put a bar in there, a TV, television, whatever, but you can't use it for what I bought it for. And the lot's so small, that's about all it's good for.
It's been a car lot for over 70 years. I bought my first car there. I'm 83 years old. That's been a car lot, well, 70 years.
And then, I mean, when I bought the place, me and Mr. Redliff went downtown, because they was working on the street, or they fixed and put that new street in. We went downtown, they showed us the plans, asked them down there if I was gonna have any problems with anything. And they said, "No." I went ahead and bought the place, they fixed the road. You know, and I did, like I said, I didn't know there was a problem until I had it leased out.
Yeah.
And I had a guy that wanted to put a lot there. Well, when it come time for the first month rent, I went down and asked him what was going on. He says, "City won't let me put a car lot here." I said, "Well, it's been a car lot for 50 years."
Yeah, that's right.
When this first started, they told me to contact the people behind me and see if they could change it to M1. And then Rhodes owns the corner lot. I went down, talked to Rhodes.
Right.
None of them had a problem with it. Soon as I did that, then I had to do the 360-degree deal, where I find everybody's name, got all them worked up. And the only problem I got with this deal that they're talking now is, I gotta do the same thing. Gotta contact everybody in 360-degree deal, self-addressed stamp envelopes, have to come to the council meeting. You know, I don't know about, you guys got rental property or whatever, but when you rent something to somebody, they might be there six months, they might do something, leave. You know, the guy had portable buildings, he got me for $1,200. He just left. But every time, you know, when somebody comes down and say, "Hey, I want to rent that. What does it take to get in it?" "Well, you know, we're gonna have to go in front of this." "Well, they're not gonna rent it." And I always thought later on, when I retire, if I wanted to get back in the car business, I had a perfect spot.
Well...
Right's right, and wrong's wrong.
Well, first of all, I apologize for not opening the... I got ahead of myself there. But we want to make it right for you. And we're gonna do that. And it shouldn't cause any further work on your part. We will do that through an administrative on a temporary.
Correct. We will look at issuing the business license conditionally while we go through the process.
The only thing about that is, I don't have anybody that wants to rent it. And I'm not going back in the car business for a while.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's not... I can't really do much there. You know, I don't have my dealer tags no more or nothing. But...
So then you don't have anybody to rent it?
No, I had it rented. I had it rented, but they come to get their city licenses, and they wouldn't let them have it, because they said it wasn't zoned for a car lot. Well, I bought it for a car lot. And I mean, he was there for all them years. But somehow, when it got switched over, don't know what happened, you know, it just got switched over. And if you leave my lot and you go west on Independence, you got the insurance guy next door, the investment guy, then you got the new... There's a restaurant there. You got Ray Southern, he's got a car lot, he's M1. Then you got the Lock and Keys place, then you got a bar, you know, all the way down to Rhodes. This business is all the way from my place, too, there. You know, it's not... That's why I was telling Ryan, I said, "It's not like I bought a piece of property downtown Cape and decided I want to put a lot in it," you know? I bought it for that.
Right.
I was there 38 years, and I remember I had to call the police, I think, a couple of times, they broke in down there. So we didn't have much trust. You know, we talked about a bar here, blah, blah, blah. All this man wants is to get it...
I just want to get it put back where it was when I bought it.
So that's what we're accomplishing. That's what we're accomplishing. But the one you had it rented to will not take it now?
No, he got a place morally.
Okay.
Now, he's already got him a car.
Just some more cars here. What we're looking to do, Molly, is to alter, get a special, potentially a special permit, if there was a business right now, if there's not, and then taking it back to Planning and Zoning to get it put into C...
We're proposing to keep the zoning the same, which is C1 neighborhood commercial, which is what the neighborhood is right now. We're talking about amending the C1 zoning regulations to allow auto sales as a special use permit. So anyone in C1 could do auto sales if they came and got a special use permit. What we were trying to do to accommodate the applicant is issue to him or his potential lessy a business license conditionally, you know, so they could get going, which we've done in the past. For example, in Deer Creek Doggy Day Camp, they needed the same thing, a special use permit, changing the zoning ordinance. So we gave them a business license conditionally to get them up and running while we went through the process, because it does take a little bit of time to get through that.
So basically, if you find somebody that wants to rent that for a car lot, it can be done.
Now...
My only thing is, is that Planning and Zoning approved for M1.
No, they did not recommend M1. They were recommending C2. But there's no other C2.
They do M1 if I got the guy behind me and the guy at PageCo to do that whole square, that wouldn't be spot zoning.
Correct.
Then they changed it.
Right. That was... I know staff did talk to you about getting some additional property owners. However, I believe there was neighborhood opposition at the Planning and Zoning Commission.
The church was the only one, and he was... I don't see him here, but he was here the other day. He said he didn't have a problem with me selling cars there, but he didn't want that whole corner somebody buy it and go in there and tear down something that he didn't want.
Right. And that was why that was...
But like I said, I didn't know what it was when I bought it. I just know it was a car lot.
Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't know either.
Well, you'll still be able to do that. You'll still be able to do that.
But, you know, doing the 360-degree deal and going through the whole process every time somebody rents us...
You're not gonna have to do that. You're not gonna have to do that.
But the landowner can apply for the special use without the dealership, right? Without the car dealer. He can apply for the special use permit now if he wanted to. Is that correct?
He could. Special use permits are often tied to that specific use, though. So if there was any change, and there can also be conditions placed on that special use permit. So depending on, you know, if he has a different lessy that wants to do things differently that might need some amendment, but he could certainly apply and get that approved and get that going.
But in the meantime, if he found somebody tomorrow on that with the temporary, it wouldn't delay him any. Yeah. Okay?
And I think that's fair.
There you go. What I need to do now, then, is wait.
Rent it.
Rent it.
Yeah.
Okay. Y'all remember me when I come back, because y'all a bunch of different people that's here today.
We'll remember you.
Maybe you'll come out of retirement and start selling cars.
I need to get him to.
Oh, boy. I sold a bunch up there, you know? Four men, sorry, that's what I got Ted there. But...
He used to sell 100 cars a month out of there.
I sold a lot of cars.
Yeah. Okay. Well, you'll be able to have it. And counsel, I apologize for jumping ahead there. Okay, we'll do. Now, counsel, two, number 19, Bill number 17-156, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of property at 921 Independence Street in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from C1 to C2. And that's what we were talking about when you gave me an odd look at why you're doing that now. Thank you for looking me in the eye. I understand. I apologize for that. So we do need a motion for that.
So moved.
So moved by Moore. And seconded by Fox. And we'll... Then the right move would be to vote no and turn that down, and we'll go to work with... Staff will go to work with the change of the ordinance, and we'll have that available on a temporary basis if and when it happens before. Any other discussion? In favor, aye? Those opposed? Aye. The consent agenda here.
Number 17-141, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, regarding shipping containers. An ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, regarding shipping containers. Number 17-143, an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, relating to the Cape JC Municipal Golf Course Advisory Board. An ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, relating to the Cape JC Municipal Golf Course Advisory Board. Number 17-144, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 4996, and approving the record plot of Route K North 3rd subdivision. An ordinance repealing ordinance number 4996, approving the record plot of Route K North 3rd subdivision. Number 17-149, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute NESCO agreement with BWE Holdings policy and Perfectory State Bank of Cape County for Red Hawk Commons Phase III in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17-150, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute license and indemnity agreement with Centurion Development LLC for installation of a sign at 20 North Main Streets, Suite 101, in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17-151, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Laffey Cement Finishing Inc. for the Boxwood Drive Box covert project in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17-155, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Planning Design Studio LLC for parks and recreation projects in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Counsel, you've heard the consent agenda, the motion for approval.
Excuse me, point of order. Call for appearances. You can do that later. Don't worry about it. Go ahead.
Motion? By Zero? Seconded by Fox. Discussion? Those in favor, aye?
I need eight and nine marked in abstention.
Eight and nine abstention by Councilman Guard. Those in favor, aye? Those opposed? Okay. Okay, anyone to appear for the council on any item that is on the agenda? Okay, counsel, we have one new ordinance left. Bill number 17-152, an ordinance approving the record plot of Red Hawk Common Phase III, first read. By Guard.
No, I second.
Zero, and seconded by Essner. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We have no appointments tonight. Is there any other business coming for us?
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
By Guard. Seconded by Zero. Are those in favor, aye? Those opposed, it'll be our turn.